We requested from the county government was two million forty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. And we requested those monies to go towards step increases in healthcare costs. That represents a two percent increase, which was tied to their financial projection last fiscal year, in May of last fiscal year. As of yesterday, the only thing that will be slated and going into their budget at their April seventeenth public hearing is only maintenance of effort.
One hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Um, point two percent, a point two percent increase. Uh, the, what's important and why we wanted to make sure that this is up and present is that as we present our budget, we present our budget in a certain fashion and we kind of go through the categorical disbursements and we have it. When it goes across the street, they receive all that information and all the presentations that we make. But this is really the, they, when they say, what's the ECC sheet, the essential cost chain sheet? This is what they're provided. And this one is a little challenging because it's talking about how are we, how are we paying for this step? The step to give, uh, to take every single employee, over two thousand employees, and give them their negotiated step, it costs two point five million dollars. Now, that two point five million dollars, and we can talk about that a little bit, that's, we take into account to get to that number, we take things into account like lapped salary savings and the position changes and the attrition of retiring teachers at one s- space and a new teacher coming in at a lower. We take all of that into account to get to that two point five million dollars. Now, of that two point five million dollars, because we negotiated a four-year agreement, this July one, assuming they get their step, that's the last portion of the phase in so that our employees would then have, for the triple option, they would pay twenty percent of their, their contribution towards their insurance is twenty percent.
And our administrators is twenty-five percent.
And the administrators has already been twenty-five seventy-five. That revenue plus other elements to the healthcare changes, um, we believe we can offset by eight hundred thousand dollars. So that means that then the, the cost for the step works out to be about one point seven million dollars. And that's where I was yesterday with the county commissioners. We were saying that if, if we could get to about one point five million dollars over maintenance of effort, given that they've already allocated point two percent, we have a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, it's guaranteed, because by law, they can't give us any less. We can make the step work. We still would have to figure out how we're gonna make the healthcare increase work, recognizing that we've gone out to RFP, we've renegotiated, all of that, we've been doing very good with claims this particular year. We roll money in, but, so we only believe that our healthcare is gonna increase in cost by about less than a million dollars. We would then use state aid to offset that amount. What that means is if the county yesterday had said, you know what, we'll figure out a way, we're all in this together, you can have one point five million dollars, and we recognize that's above maintenance of effort, we would be then working on how to make all the other pieces work. We'd be talking about positions, we'd be talking about, we would be moving forward in a productive way. We weren't, we weren't. So the next slide shows their expenditure summary, and I'm assuming this is what they're gonna, this is a bit of an eye chart. But I'm assuming they're gonna, they're gonna go to budget hearing, they don't have a, this is, that was their last work session. Next week is they're just signing it to go to, to go to the-
Public hearing.
To go to public hearing in April on the-
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Next day.
So we won't do anything for a month, we're just gonna sit there and wait. It looks like everybody else, pretty much, is getting about a two percent for, for all of the county government, they're getting a two percent overall, for the elected officials, they're getting a-
Five point two.
Five point two percent increase. For all boards, they're, overall, they're getting a two percent increase, except for the Board of Education, that's getting a point two increase. Now, we got a hundred and two in seventeen, we got a hundred and two in eighteen, and what they told us yesterday is they're putting and going forward to the budget hearing with a hundred and two for nineteen. So that's, that's where, that's where we are. If you roll to the next, um, their revenue summary, and we can talk, you know, we, this is, they're saying that the, the whole, they're gonna only recognize a little over two, two point four percent increase of new money. So they're saying conservatively, they're gonna have about five point two million dollars of new money through their budget process, of that five point two million dollars of new money, this is not taxes staying, no taxes being, nothing being changed, and an exceptionally conservative projection for income tax. Of that five point two million dollars, the school system will get a hundred and sixty thousand dollars because that, by law, is all they're required to give us. When we started this budget process, when they first rolled out this year in December, Mike Hewitt said flat funding or said maintenance of effort, that sounds about right for the school board. We assume that was just, that was just the starting point, everybody, you know, you start with something. We've gone through this entire process, we have been an active participant, we have been at all of those budget meetings, and we have seen all of the machinations as they go through to the very end. The Board of Education was called last to the table. And when we were called last to the table yesterday, they asked me to come to the table, and there was seven thousand dollars. That's all they had, of the five point two million dollars worth of new money, they had seven thousand dollars to address our two percent request. We were last in the budget conversation. And it's really hard, it's really hard not to come to the conclusion that education is last. It is really hard not to come to that conclusion. So, um, this is where we are, we can't, we can't go back and re-work anything, we're just kind of in a, we're just kind of in a holding pattern. I don't, I don't know, the, there's been, um, income tax is a, is a challenge. When I, when I look at that revenue summary, I see the eighteen, uh, income tax, a projected revenue of ninety-two million dollars. And what they're saying is that ninety-two million dollars is only gonna be increased at less than a percent. Keep in mind that the State of Maryland, their income revenue board, right?
The Bureau of Revenue Estimates.
Bureau of Revenue Estimates, they're projecting for the State of Maryland a five percent increase.
Five point three percent.
Five point three.
And that's what the State of Maryland budget is based on.
And that's what the, yeah, so, um, that ninety-two million dollars in the FY eighteen approved, that ninety-two million dollars there, in December, the county commissioners gave direction to the CFO, to, to Jeanette Cudmore, and Jeanette Cudmore came forward and they reduced that amount by three percent. And that's what we presented to you on February fourteenth on Valentine's Day. We're still waiting for an explanation as to what that, why, why you would reduce, why you would reduce that revenue estimate.
Okay, so I do have, like, uh, some comments. So after our Valentine's Day meeting, I had asked some questions, and then as a board, we all, all wanted to know some answers. So, uh, Ms. Bailey put together an email and sent it to, uh, the county, well, to Dr. Bridgette and to Randy Guy, Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner President. What our questions were, was why is the state projecting the five point three percent? And yet, they are pers, projecting a growth of, what is it, less than three percent?
It was, it was three at that time, and then last week's budget session, they revised it to three and a half. But let's keep in mind the three and a half that they are projecting is based on the reduced two point eight million that they instructed them to reduce revenues by in December. So, they say it's three and a half, but it's three and a half on a lesser revenue base.
It's a tax year over tax year increase versus a fiscal year over fiscal year increase, which adds to a lot of confusion.
Right.
Right, so, uh, these were our questions, so where are they getting these numbers from? So, and so, Ms. Bailey sent them a request asking, where are you, where are you getting these numbers from for your projection? No answer. On March second, she resent the request to all the county commissioners, along with Dr. Bridgette. And to this date-
I, I still don't have anything.
No answer, so I see that, you know, like, uh, they just blow us off. They, they don't care if we get an answer.
Right, so I know, I think that the association's put in a Freedom of Information Act request, and I don't know if that's been, if we-
We just got it yesterday, which is-
Okay, so-
So I just received a copy of that from ESMIC this morning, and their income tax revenues received this year to date, as compared to last year, referenced as a four point one percent increase. Their February income tax distributions received this year represents an eight point five percent increase over last February.
So I wanna give kudos to Jeanette Cudmore. She originally projected a four percent increase to the, to income tax. And that's, when you look at that sheet, income tax, it goes, it's a four percent increase to get to ninety-two million dollars. That was her projection, that was the budget that they built. She's very good at projecting income tax. She was, she, I believe she's gonna end up being spot on. The challenge is that then if she is spot on, then we're only really working from a less than one percent increase on that spot on actual, the actuals. You know, when we talk about numbers, we wanna use as, as often as possible, the actual numbers, not, not, not some projection, some historical, it's really hard to drive a car looking back. You, you, you look where you are and where you wanna be, and, um, we won't know any of this information for sure, and I've said this several times, until December. In December of every year, there is, just as we have a reconciliation of our books following July one, we reconcile everything out, and there's a public reckoning as to how well we did. The county government has that exact same reckoning on December of every year.
Our audited financial statements are due to MSDE September thirtieth. The county government doesn't have a requirement until December thirtieth.
And in December of seventeen, last year, when they moved this forecast down, they recognized what? What was their fund balance that they recognized? I know, eight million dollars. It was eight million dollars, and the eight million dollars went to the, the undesignated fund balance, that's now thirty million dollars. And if we continue on the path that we're on, we're playing the same games, in December of eighteen, we all need to be paying a great deal of attention to where they are, because that's, that's our money, that's our money.
And Dr. Smith?
And not the school system money, when I say our money, I mean the people who live in the county, who are paying taxes. I don't pay taxes to fund an undesignated fund balance of thirty million dollars, I don't.
Pay it for services.
I pay it for services, I pay it for my sheriffs, I pay it for my state workers, and I pay it for my schools.
And a significant portion of that fund balance was as a result of salary savings.
Right, it was all salary savings.
I just wanna say, I, I guess what, it's very disheartening when, out of one side of their mouth, the, and I'm not gonna say all the county commissioners, but you do have some, they're saying, you know, schools are important, education is important, whatever you need us to do, we wanna make sure our schools are safe, make sure our, our students and our kids get what they need. And then behind the scenes, you know, our, the staff here is having to work so hard to try to make things work. And, you know, people just need to see this, you know, are you, are you for education or are you not? You can't have it come out of one side of your mouth saying, you know, we want our students to have the best, you know, and then not fund when we have this much, you know, in the, uh, undesignated fund balance. I mean, it just, and, and plus, when you're expecting this, the school system, and I'm sure the Sheriff's Department and everywhere else, you tell them one thing, and then turn around and reel it back in and tell them something else, and then reel that back in and tell them something else. And it's a constant, let's just tell you something else. Um, and I know that Tammy, you have worked these numbers so many different ways, so many different times, the staff has gone back to re-figure out what they can do, it's a lot, a lot of work, trying to make what we have, you know, make that work and make it work productively and, and effectively. But, you know, it's just they keep changing their mind, you know, and what is it, are they for education or are they not?
Uh, there's, there's a couple of things also to put in perspective, um, that came out of yesterday's meeting. In addition to the increase, the step increase for our staff, they also wanna be able to give it to all the county employees, which in, include the county government employees and the sheriff's office. And that's another six hundred thousand dollars, correct? Both the school system employees and the county employees went out to RFP for healthcare, which we heard about a few weeks ago. It doesn't seem to me, the way Tammy goes back to that first page about how we're gonna offset our salary increase with the eight hundred and, um, thirteen thousand dollars in healthcare changes, it doesn't appear to me, in anything that I've seen over the last two weeks over there, that they are taking the healthcare savings from the county government and applying it directly to that step increase that they are claiming that they cannot give because they don't have the money, because they're not gonna give it to us without giving it to their employees, which I, I can understand that. So, that, that's a challenge that I don't, I don't understand that, that accounting. Uh, I had another point when you were talking Rita, and I forgot it. Secondly, um, when, I'm gonna drive this point home again, when we signed this, this agreement, this negotiated agreement four years ago, we were very, very clear with the county commissioners as to what our increases would be for the next four years. And we have not moved off of that number, we haven't moved off that number nor off of that percentage. So, from my perspective, if you are running a corporation or anything, you have a plan in place for what expenses you know are coming down the line. They knew that this was coming, right?
Right.
We told them what it was, and they were very happy that it would be these modest increases of, you know, two million dollars, one and a half million dollars over the next several years, and not these large swings of six or eight that we had seen in prior years.
Which helped them with their bond rating.
Well, it helped them get their bond rating, but then it also, if, if I'm sitting at their table, then at that point, I need to make sure that whatever I'm doing, I'm keeping my revenue streams available to meet those, those services down the road. And with some of the, um, actions that they've taken, I don't know if they had that forward-thinking, um, right, budget planning aspect in mind. So, um, you know, I, I have to give kudos to Dr. Smith because he, he was challenged yesterday by two county commissioners who specifically asked him that he, to, for us to find the one and a half million dollars. And they put him on the spot, and they wanted to know if the one and a half million dollars, if that's money you need, you tell me right now what you have to cut. And that's, that's not any conversation that we would ever have off the cuff like that, um, in a, in a budget work session. Um, because all that does is create angst and anger and stress for our employees or for the parent or for the students that, you know, we don't know what the end result is. Oh, I had it again, and it just flew right out of my mind, I had one more thing.
Also, that, you, you talked about looking forward.
Right, well, that, that was my, that was my five-year plan, so.
Well, so, uh, while you're thinking of that, that, so our two percent request has a significant impact on, there are over two thousand staff members and are over eighteen thousand students. One of the things I was struggling with, and clearly from the major back and forth that was carried out between, um, one of the commissioners and Ms. Cudmore yesterday, had to do partly with lapped salaries. And we, as you indicated, we utilize lapped salaries, that impact on our budget to, to better refine our numbers. They said that they could not do that. And then, so they have to plug in, for instance, the full cost of every one of their FTEs in the sheriff's department and in county government. The sheriff's office talked, they kept talking about these twenty-eight positions in the sheriff's budget that are not filled, have not been filled for several years, cannot be filled, and yet, the two and a half million dollars for those twenty-eight positions keep being programmed into the sheriff's budget. And I, and I, I'm not, please don't think I'm trying to single out his budget, but there was so much of a discussion yesterday about that, that those twenty-eight positions get programmed in even every year, and the two and a half million dollars for those twenty-eight positions then keep being reverted to the county. Help me understand, they, my understanding from the conversation yesterday was that, um, they couldn't use lapped salaries, that there was some law against it. So why do we if they can't?
You're, you're absolutely correct, there was a significant amount of conversation, in particular about the sheriff's office budget and lapped salary savings. But putting the sheriff's office aside, let's just talk about lapped salary savings in general and best budgeting practices. First of all, I wanna reassure the board that what we are doing is the best budgeting practices. Um, as a matter of fact, I even did some research last night to have some guidance for you all. The Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization that provides fiscal, um, information and guidance to state and local county governments, not school districts, state and local county governments, has put out best practices in budgeting of personnel. And they actually put out a, um, a white paper several years ago that's still extremely pertinent. So if I beg your indulgence for just a second, I'd like to quote a couple of items from this. Given the revenue forecasts and constraints most governments are facing, increased emphasis is being placed on accurate, I emphasize accurate, expenditure projections. Since salaries make up the greatest portion of the expenditure budget, is it logical to apply forecasting techniques that can provide an accurate picture of where payroll dollars are headed? The further states that not all positions will be filled fifty-two weeks of the year, so expected vacancies need to be addressed in the salary budget. If the government fully funds salaries associated with vacancies, it is building some cushion into the budget. The further states that since some governments experience vacancies during the year, it may be prudent to include a hiring lag in the budget. That is what we do, that is what the county government has done in the past. In fact, they actually did it in FY eighteen. So the question becomes why it isn't an issue now for FY nineteen?
You know, I'm also-
So in layman's terms, what the conversation came out of yesterday is that the county commissioners were afraid that if they pulled any of those twenty-eight out and didn't fully fund them and not use the, the lag budget process, that they would lose those FTEs, and then they would have to be added back in. And that, 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 that's what the whole conversation, that, that's what the fear was. They didn't, they didn't want to take away those FTEs from the sheriff.
Right, but it's a change in the way that they've, that, that, that's recommended to be, and it's a change from the way they did things in just in eighteen.
Correct.
So it's a total sh, it's a total shift of-
As a matter of fact, when they have their final audited financial statements, as do we, there is a supplemental document within the audited financial statements that has a budget variance target in it. They will have significant budget variances if they change their budgeting practice, of which they'll need to report back to the bond raters on why they have those significant budget variances.
So, because they'll have that significant variance, does, what impact will that have potentially on the bond rating?
Obviously, my, budgeting accurately and providing appropriate forecasting.
Okay. Which then would color whatever they would be forecasting for upcoming years when they went to the, for their bond rating and the bond market.
So if they're not, if they're not accurate in their budgeting, the bond rating folks can't trust that they're going to be accurate going forward. Uh, you know, and I think, uh, because we have not, um, taken any action to change the budget that we sent forward to the county commissioners, they are not taking our budget forward as we presented and appropriately voted on it. They are taking a maintenance of effort, flat funding budget. So all of the items that we discussed, um, that we need for the school system, all of those things are absent from the budget that will go to public hearing.
Yes.
Now, can they do that, because we voted on what needs to go forward. Can they just, like, willy-nilly just, okay, we're taking this out?
They have, I mean, they have to, they have to present a balanced budget for the public hearing. So they can't put our request in at full funding because then their budget isn't balanced, and they're not willing to adjust the revenue side or the way they are accounting-
Or their expenditures.
For lapped positions in order to make that happen. So it has to go to hearing with us being in the, with maintenance of effort, which is what they had originally built way back when, when they started. And I finally remembered my piece. So, um, keeping in mind that, just to make everyone perfectly clear, what the, whatever money we lose this year and whatever services, if we do go forward with maintenance of effort, that we would have to reduce or, and or cut, we would not see that back, I would assume for-
It was, it was very interesting that we're talking with the sheriff's department, how, how dire it is, if they, you know, they're loath to, to, to use accurate projections of revenue expenses because they believe that somehow the positions will disappear. And yet, they, there's none of that same consideration for education. It's just, it's, we, you know, it was really, if the budget that's presented says, this is what the revenues are gonna be, and if those numbers aren't accurate, it's really hard to build a good budget. And on the other side, it says, this is what those expenditures are gonna be. And if those expenditures aren't really accurate, that's, that's a hard, so, we've got questions about the revenues and the expenditures of the budget going forward. The only thing I know for certain is at the end of that meeting, I got called before them with a two million dollar request and was presented with seven thousand dollars and told, what could I do? And, and honestly, I, I was caught at a loss, I don't know what I can do. I don't know what we can do.
And, uh, I would add that, God forbid we have any s- security issues or safety issues.
There is no, right, there is no, there's one security person that was built into the budget, but that's, I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no allocation for security services, none.
I mean, it, right, I mean, there, there's no allocation, and based on where we are, services will have to be reduced next year. So whatever the school system looks like this year, it will not look the same next year because we, just, it just won't, it just won't happen. And it will, once again, I mean, I'm sorry to the pair of educators, but, I mean, they were cut years ago, prior to this seated board.
It took three, four years, actually, to get, to get them all put back in the budget.
Whatever's cut this year, we won't see back because they're certainly not gonna make up the one and a half million dollar shortfall next year based on the budget projections, nor give us whatever else we may additionally require.
And that, and that goes back to begging the question, so what is important to the county commissioners? It goes back to, to, to beg that question. There's that, but I think also, what, from what we have seen, they have the funds, but, but they have chosen to place them in a certain way that means that the distribution of those funds, um, won't allow us to go forward. I mean, uh, Commissioner Darbo made the, made the suggestion yesterday that knowing that they keep getting two and a half million dollars back every year from the sheriff's department because they can't fill the positions, we, several of us had suggested, then, since you know it's basically a numbers of, we're putting it in there, but we're not gonna use it, so we know it's coming back to us, then for the purposes of a balanced budget, cover that with some of your fund balance. And I was told, nope, we're not allowed to do that. And I pointed out, you are allowed to do it. It is not a wise move necessarily to use fund balance for recurring expenses, but when you know you're going to get that two and a half million dollars back, presumably, you can cover it for the purpose of the exercise of presenting a balanced budget. What Commissioner Darbo- Um, what Commissioner Darbo recommended, since they were not willing to cover it with fund balance, was to, um, first he suggested requesting every county department, um, decrease their budget by one percent. That would not cover the one and a half million, so then he went to three and then dropped to two, pointing out that, because the sheriff's department reverts back money every quarter that they have not been able to spend because they haven't been able to hire the individuals, um, that, that money would just be programmed back into, um, through a, through a budget adjustment, would go back to the various departments. Um, he had one other person interested in taking that up, um, but, um, two others wanted no part of it, and the third made no comment. So, I'm, I'm struggling with this because we're not asking them to print money, we're not asking them to spend money they don't have. I, I just don't understand where this disconnect is, um.
Well, actually, if they could print money, that'd be okay. That'd be, I'd be also with that.
I, you know, it just, um, it, 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 I was with Karen and the superintendent and, um, Dr. Walker and Ms. McCourt at the, the two budget hearings, or budget work sessions for the commissioners the, these last two weeks, and um, I, I was really struck by the change in tone um, this year over the last several years. And, and as, as Jill Morris pointed out today, we have, we have worked very collaboratively, we've worked, um, very diligently to make some changes in our negotiated agreement that allow fairness to our employees at the same time, making this a much more sustainable prod- um, product going forward. Um, and we did much of this with the knowledge of the commissioners, with their blessing, um, and, uh, and with a, a majority of them indicating that, that they would be able to manage this going forward. So, um, what we did was in good faith. I'm, I'm just really struggling here. I, I, I really hope that, um, that people will turn out for the commissioner's budget hearing, because one of the things that we heard yesterday was, well, we'll see who shows up at the budget hearing, and then what, where we go from here. Um, so, um, i- if there are things important to people in our budget, um, you need to, they, they need to come out and, and speak about it, um, because we've been trying. And apparently, you know, six voices are not sufficient, um, to, um, to make the case.
I agree with, um, Mrs. Allen. Um, what I think will make the difference is for the community members to come out and support our budget. They wanna hear from the community, parents, students, community organizations, and support the original budget that the superintendent proposed. Um, one reason why people move to a community is the quality of the school system. We have a good school system, and we wanna keep it that way. Education is the foundation of democracy, and we need to have educated, responsible students who grow up to be responsible individuals, making good decisions, working, working and contributing to society. So I encourage everyone to come out to the budget hearing, to speak on behalf of the budget, 'cause those are things that we need, those are not ones. In order to move the system forward, we have to pay for the education system. If we don't pay now, we're gonna pay later in adverse costs to the community.
I don't even wanna move the system forward. I just wanna keep it the way it is, very, I mean, we're not, we're not asking for the world.
No, I, when I say move it forward, I mean the superintendent's budget, that's what I mean.
The two million dollars.
Right, right.
And what they have to look at too, is when the Brock Commission comes down, you've gotta have a good, I mean, it's, it's like, you just have to keep, you know, you have to look forward to this, and I don't think that uh, they have, they're, they're planning forward, they're.
I, I, I just have one more comment. Um, Tammy, we haven't, we haven't received any questions from any of the county commissioners or anyone in government, in the finance department over there about anything on our budget, is that correct? Okay, so, um, I'm gonna put on my parent hat here for a second. Um, out of the two elected boards that we have in this county, uh, Rita and I are the only two that have children in the school system. And Jill, to your point, it was extremely difficult for me to sit there yesterday as a parent and listen to the county commissioners explain what is and is not needed in the schools, when I'm not sure the last time any one of them has set foot in a school. Um, my kids get on a bus every day, they go to class every day, they participate in extracurricular activities, and I don't know how their life is going to change next year if, um, we have maintenance of effort. So, um, you know, that, that's my take on it. There's, you know, it's, it was, it was hard to, it was hard to listen to, um, you know, about what we do and do not need, when I don't think the five of anyone over there is living it every day, so.
And I think education is everybody's business, not just people who have children in the school system. I have two children that started in the school system and graduated from the school system, and gone on to successful lives. Education impacts everyone, and the quality of our school system does. The board members, whether they have children or not, are in schools all the time at programs, and we support our school system. Uh, it is important to have a variety of people on the Board of Education, and I am in schools all the time.
I'm, 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 I'm not, I'm not dating anyone on the board. I'm just saying it's a different perspective when you do have a student in the school.
And the other thing too, is, is I think because we do go in the schools, all of us, we understand what people are going through. If you don't go in the schools, you have no idea, but yet you're making decisions for something that you are not per- actively participating in. Um, it would be like me making, uh, recommendations for, let's say, the, the sher- the hospital, or the sheriff's department or something. If I am not in there and seeing what is going on, and, you know, maybe I don't have to live that life, but I need to understand where people are coming from that actually are in those positions or working there, before I can accurately propose something.
Well, and you could get that if we had a dialogue back and forth, but.
Right, but we're not having a dialogue because they're not contacting you.
Well, and I just, you know, my personal budget, the, I guess, the tax cuts that have occurred at the county level impacting their revenue streams, um, I, I've not seen a change in my personal budget, so, I, I mean.
Did you get thirty dollars back?
Yeah, so I mean, I, yeah.
You didn't buy a new car with your tax savings?
No, no, sorry, I did not buy a new car with my tax savings.
I know what you can do with thirty million dollars of an undesignated fund balance. If you really wanted to curry favor with the voters, give it back to all of us. We put it in, give it back.
Yeah, probably. Cause that thirty million dollars would make a whole lot of difference in one year than, you know, when you. It, it's just very frustrating.
It doesn't need to be like this. It doesn't need to be like this. And, and for all the, all the stress and consternation this is gonna create, it, it simply doesn't, it just simply doesn't need to be like this. We're a great, this is a great county. This is a great place to live. This is a great place to have your kids be educated. It's a great place to be an educator and work with kids. It does not need to be like this.
Right, so April seventeenth, Great Mills High School, the, it starts at six thirty, the doors open at six.
Right.
There's about twenty million public hearings that night, so.
But there's, there's opportunity, there's opportunity way before that to make your voice be heard.
Right, just remember that ninety-three percent of our budget goes to personnel costs, and the remaining percentage, um, where we would potentially have to cut, is going to mean some very, very significant pain.
All right, anyone have anything else? All right, we're done.
Thanks all.